Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I want to reiterate to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes for approval tonight. Just want to note, Joe Mazaka is not here with us tonight. He is under the weather and our thoughts and prayers are with him for a quick recovery. Filling in form is Matthew Jacoby. And I'm going to come down here and do some presentations. Have a few representatives from the DDC in the wings, if you can come forward. I'm going to take pictures. All right.
I'm representing off on the side.
My representative is off on the side, so you can click away. And for those that are pretty much aware that the DDC is one of our great volunteer boards, not only do they put in a lot of hours, but they have energized volunteerism throughout this town. So we want to recognize several volunteers with our Leading the Way Awards, and then we're going to recognize a younger volunteer. So can I have Jean Cracovia up here, please?
Why the younger ones?
Yeah, the younger volunteers.
Only the young ones.
Yep, we'll start with the young ones first. Jean falls in that category of the 80/20, the 20% of the people that do 80% of the work, because today we're recognizing for his work for May Day, but he's also a key volunteer with our shade tree. But Jean has been instrumental part of May Day in Madison for 13 years. In addition to sitting on the May Day Committee, every year he leads a site team as a captain. As of late, he is coordinating the team for St. Vincent's. Jean is a treasure of the Friends of Madison Shade Tree, as well as Vice Chair of the Shade Tree Management Board. Through his leadership, the Friends of Madison Shade Trees have taken on year-round maintenance of our beloved Rose Garden Park at the corner of Green Avenue and Kings Road. Great time of year to start enjoying that. And further honoring history and the heritage of Roseville, Rose City by maintaining that beautiful park. It is with this award we recognize Jean Cracovia's enduring commitment to May Day in Madison. Thank you. Let me have Barbara Carey and Eileen Richards up here, please. Now we have a team here with another Leading the Way Award. Eileen and Barbara joined Madison May Day Committee representing the Civics Committee for the Garden Club of Madison for a two-year term. That was six years ago. They bring to May Day both experience and aesthetic, the aesthetic needed to beautify the entire town. On any given day, you might spot one or both of them planting flowers around the clock downtown, cleaning up around Mary McDaniel's Park, or making sure the entrance to Madison welcomes visitors with life and beauty. Tonight, we thank Eileen Richards and Barbara Carey for their tireless work on behalf of May Day in Madison. Thank you. Our next one goes to Small, that's all. So the old Drew and Dean Paywell, come on up. Small, that's all, owned by brothers Drew and Dean, have been active contributors to May Day in Madison for over 10 years. Every year, they show up with man and equipment to move piles and piles of mulch around town. Beyond that, what they do on May Day each year, Small, that's all, cut trees, tree wells in front of Harley Dodge in preparation for May Day, and maintain municipal lots on Cook and Elmer Streets. Most recently, they have adopted the Madison Civic Center, donating plantings and labor throughout the year. They are the first landscaping company in Madison to fully adopt a building and its grounds, hopefully setting a nice tone for the rest of the businesses out there. Thank you Drew and Dean Paywell for, Small, that's all, for all your time, work, and pride in May Day in Madison. I know Dr. Wayne is not here, but Dr. Carmen is, so please come on up. Now we're going to recognize Madison Medical Sports Rehabilitation. For the last three years, Madison Medical and Sports Rehabilitation has been a primary sponsor of May Day in Madison. Their support provides tools, wheelbarrows, mulch, and bags, and whatever else is needed for 800-plus volunteers to dig in and make Madison look great. Dr. Wayne Zlojowski and Carmen Romano not only provide monetary support, but for the last two years, they have coordinated a big party at May Day in Madison. The committee throws to all the volunteers to thank them for their hard work, because people love to volunteer, but they love to be thanked too, so we appreciate that. This year, we hear that there are some big plans and perhaps a few surprises at that after-party. We thank you for your generous support at May Day in Madison. Sorry, Jean, now we're just picking up our young volunteers. You know, I just laid them there. Is Gabriel here? Come on up. Gabriel Benheim Killian is the winner of the annual May Day T-shirt contest. This is an annual tradition, and you'll see his great artwork on all the T-shirts on May Day. Gabriel's a fifth grader at Central Avenue School, where my two sons graduated from. He had good hands there. His T-shirt message, "Jump into the day in Madison 2012." Look at that. The committee just fell in love with his design and the idea that we could all jump into volunteerism. So, thank you for hopping up to making this a great design, and we'll look forward to seeing you on May Day, and all yours, right there, as if it's right on a shirt, will be all over town. Thank you so much. One more presentation, my representatives from the Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race. Come on up. Somewhere ready an hour ago. Proclamation of the Borough of Madison. Celebrated the 50th Annual Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race For the Cure. Whereas breast cancer is the leading cause of death of women between the ages of 35 and 64, the ages where I lost my mother 39 years ago, an increased public awareness of this disease, its risk factors, and symptoms may save the lives of women and men across New Jersey. And whereas Susan G. Coleman For the Cure is dedicated for education and research about causes and treatment, and for the search for the cure. And whereas the Coleman National Race For the Cure Series, an event of the Susan G. Coleman For the Cure, is the largest series of five-pounder races in the world, raising public awareness and much-needed funding for breast cancer research. And whereas on Sunday, May 6, runners, walkers, survivors, co-survivors, and volunteers will unite at a new race location to be held at Essex County South Mountain Recreation Complex for the 50th Annual Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race For the Cure 5K Certified Run, and for those that don't want to run, the 5K Walk and a 1.5K Fun Walk Act. And whereas last year, Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race For the Cure brought together thousands of women, men, and children from northern New Jersey, and beyond, raised over $1.5 million for the North Jersey service region to help fund breast cancer research and provide local community life-saving education, screening, and treatment services. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim that Sunday, May 6, 2012, the Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race For the Cure Day in the Borough of Madison. All residents are encouraged to participate in the Susan G. Coleman For the Cure North Jersey Race to help fund funds and awareness for the fight against this life-threatening disease, and to join in this celebration of survivorship and to honor those who have dedicated lives to research and treating and curing and caring for victims, and to those who have lost their battle of breast cancer. Thank you so much for all you do for May Day's work.
Hi, on behalf of the Susan G. Coleman North Jersey Foundation, I thank the mayor and the council for this honor. As the mayor stated, we will be racing on May 6. We invite everyone in town here to join us. Even a fun walk is, somebody can do, it doesn't take you long. I am proud and honored to be one of the two male breast cancer awareness ambassadors this year for the Race for the Cure, the first time that North Jersey is bringing men's breast cancer and breast health into the race, and I'm proud to be doing that for friends of mine. So, thank you again, and come out and try this on May 6.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A few more, well, we'll let the room clear out a little bit while I get to... I'd like to recognize the Borough of Madison's employees of the month of April. Pat Gallagher and Sal DiBiase of the Utilities Department, and Donna Carey, and Magdalena Madarano of the Water and Light Building Department, for their excellent work they performed in launching our Waterline Protection Program, which was kicked off this year. Couldn't have done it without their support. Also want to, as you walk around to downtown and get ready for May Day, is take a look at our alleyways. You will notice new signage, and we'll be hearing about that at a later meeting, recognizing tremendous volunteer work and the amount of hours they've put in there. And as I mentioned, as I was thanking our volunteers, that thankfully there's not a federal law about volunteering against, across state borders, as these volunteers came down or came up from Delaware and provided these signs. And with thousands of hours of work, we'll have a presentation, so you can see how they built these signage, they will be lit up. And this came through recruitment of Brad Kramer, our former chair of the DDC, recruited his brother and his brother's friend Jerry. And as I said, we'll get more details later. Also want to report for the library. The library is offering special activities for children during the school vacation week, so please check their website for further details. That's at madisonnjlibrary.org. A reminder also, Madison Library cardholders may borrow passes to 11 museums in the metropolitan area. A great vacation, something to keep busy during the vacation. Of special interest for the families are the Intrepid Air and Space Museum, the Children's Museum of Manhattan, Mars Museum, Museum of Rowley Trades and Crafts, and the Montclair Art Museum. This pass program was made possible through the courtesy of the Friends of the Library. And that is it for mayoral announcements at this point, so public safety. Jeanne Sukamoto?
Yes, thank you. First, over the weekend, our fire department responded three times to our Department of Public Works yard on John Avenue for the fire of a very large pile of mulch. Thirteen firefighters and three pieces of apparatus went on scene for about nine hours and pumped approximately 60,000 gallons of soapy water onto the pile. The DPW provided a front-end loader and operator to assist with, to assist the fire department with opening up and moving portions of the pile so fire could be exposed. Residents should be aware that there is a red flag warning for our area. This means that we have a high risk of fire danger in our region due to a very dry, due to a very dry conditions and strong winds. This also means that outside fire can spread very quickly. Outdoor burning is strictly prohibited in Madison. Also, from the fire department, firefighter Dave Carey is mentoring a service project with the local Boy Scout Venture Crew 77. The project is called Coupons for the Troops. The program runs from April 1st through April 30th. Residents are asked to clip manufacturers' coupons and drop them off at the drop boxes at the following locations. The Madison Fire and Police Departments Harley Dodge Memorial Lobby, Madison High School, Madison Junior School, Madison Library, American Legion Post 43, Madison YMCA, Madison Else Clubs, Presbyterian Grace and St. Vincent's Churches, Stop &amp; Shop, Patriots, past council headquarters at Florham Park. Our police department is investigating nine burglaries and thefts on November, on, excuse me, on April 9th, from unlocked motor vehicles parked in residential neighborhoods at Elma, Orchard, Crestwood, Woodside, and Valley Roads. Items stolen including cash, pocketbooks, GPS units, laptops, cell phones, and personal items. We ask residents to lock their vehicles and garage doors, and report any suspicious vehicles, persons, or noises, especially during the night hours, to the police department. We ask all the residents to remember that our police services are available every day around the clock. Also want to report that the annual Project Community Pride Breakfast held on March 30th was a great success. Approximately 170 people from Chatham, Florham Park, and Madison attended the event. We congratulate Madison's honorees Bob Landrigan and Dave Carver for their volunteerism and supporting the youth in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Electrical Utility Department continues their maintenance program throughout the town, still cleaning up a little bit of the hangers that are coming out, but basically doing a fine job taking care of the maintenance of the electric utilities. Water Utility still is out there doing their maintenance as well. They urge the odd-even conservation, especially because of the mild winter that we had with very little rain so far this spring, so conservation is always good. And also for individuals who have lawn sprinklers, make sure they're sprinkling the lawns and not sidewalks and curbs and streets, because they really don't need the water as much as the lawn does. So, that's it for my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Lynx.
Thank you, Mayor. Our agenda has confirmed that they were mobilized to restart Woodin Road this week, and PHD is working on several crews on Pine Beach, Rose, and Cedar to replace gas tanks and stuff. This will minimize the delay. The Felon Sun General Contractors has completed 1,500 feet of new storm sewer, filed new storm sewer, and that's four thousand feet of hope in the neighborhood. The Town and Science and Silicy Contractors have pleased the water line contract for the Vision King and Academy on time and under budget, replacing half a mile of watermen, nine gate towers, four hydrants, and 31 services and three reefs without significant trouble. There is no DPW report this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report for finance or Borough Clerk, but would it be appropriate now to speak about the gifting at the MRC?
Yes.
So, we have been receiving several very generous gifts of material and/or in-kind donations for the new Madison Recreation Complex facility, including but not limited to building materials for the fieldhouse, design work for a donor wall, actual flagpoles, you know, for the site, as well as concrete. A group of people have been meeting to lay out the proposed park where the flagpoles and wall will be housed, and we will be actually speaking about that at length at the next council meeting. So, just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. First, a couple of reminders. Time of Your Life is being held at the Senior Center on April 14th. That's at 28 Walnut Street, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's really a good event to see what resources are available for older Madison residents, and their families should come as well. When I went to the Rosenet website, and I encourage everybody to do that, and look at the calendar, you'll see a vast number of services that are offered to senior citizens in this town. It's very impressive. It's coordinated by the Senior Advisory Committee. Please go and take a look. If you have older parents in town, take a look for them, let them look, it's very impressive. AARP Tax Assistance is in progress right now, you know, April 15th is coming up. Contact the Senior Center, their number is 973-593-3095. You make an appointment, and they'll help them prepare their income taxes. Now, the mayor alluded to an after-party on May Day. I have some information about it. It's going to be sponsored by the DDC. It's going to be held at the Ambulance Corps Building. They have the facilities for it. It's going to consist of a beer and wine tasting, as well as a pig roast, all of which are provided by Main Street Wine Cellars. There's going to be jazz music, as well as a bluegrass band. And additionally, they're trying to work out something for the children that's going to be held inside the ambulance building. So, it's going to be a nice after-party, it's going to be May 5th, it's going to run from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and there'll be more information coming out about it. So, after a hard day's work, there'll be something nice to go to, so I'll keep you posted. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds great. Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report from the Health Department, but I am, I represent Madison Borough at the Whippany River Watershed Action Committee. And we've been asked by Whippany River to host a rain barrel workshop on May 19th. So, I'm going to be, we'll probably have it down at Rosedale Avenue on Memorial Park, and there'll be lots more information coming, but these are done very beautifully. And Rutgers will bring the rain barrels, and we'll have people teaching you how to make your own rain barrel to conserve water. One of the other things I wanted to talk about, it was, I got a very interesting email this afternoon from a resident who was very upset about the amount of debris that probably encompassed maybe about three or four streets. Because of the high winds that we've been having, people put their recycling out, and they just drop the recycling on the edge of the street line there, without it being in a bag, without it being encumbered somehow by strain. And I was absolutely amazed. I shared the photos with Ray Cody this afternoon, and it was an astounding mess to see what the wind had played havoc. So, Jim Burnett doesn't know this yet, because he's on vacation, but as soon as he gets back, I think we have to get a little better PR out there to tell people, be very conservative about how you're putting out your recyclables, and make sure that if today is Paper Day, that's the only thing that goes out, because along with the paper that was flying all around today, there were barrels being pulled over that had bottles in it, and it's not Bottle Day. So, we're going to be doing a little bit more PR, but while we're having these winds, if anybody has, you know, is coming up on a Paper Day, just really be careful, because it's an awful mess. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council received one email from Ralph DiMarzo of New Providence regarding borough stormwater problems.
This is the first of two invitations for discussion from the public, and the rules on this one are, you have to discuss something that is on our discussion agenda, which right now we've expanded to two items. We have the appropriation of $20,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for a utility vehicle, and we have added a discussion on our use of excess mulch that we have down DPW. And the other thing you may comment on are any resolutions that are listed. So please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and the item you're going to speak on, and keep it to three minutes or less. Does anyone wish to be heard on agenda items or resolutions?
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. I just want to touch on this agenda discussion about the vehicle. What is that vehicle for, that $20,000 vehicle we're buying? I mean, how come this all popped up? And we went through the budget, now this is...
This was part of the capital budget, now this is the ordinance to appropriate the money to purchase the vehicle.
Oh, this was the one for the, down the MRC? That strictly...
Yes, and also, yes, and also it's a multipurpose. When it's done with its limited duty at the MRC, it's available for Public Works to reallocate for elsewhere in the community. And it was approved on the 2012 capital budget.
Thank you, Ray. Resolution 106. I've been in construction all my life. Witches are doing, and again, I have no problem, we just want to pave the park a lot. But, an example, I think, Rob, you talked about, they're going to do this 30-foot wall, they're going to put pavers, they're going to pour concrete, the tractors are going to go in there, black coals. The analogy is like, you know, you build your house, a nice new home, you put the rugs down, put all the furniture, then you're going to decide to paint the house. What I mean is that, no way, I mean, you can allocate the money and everything, but you shouldn't put the blacktop on this driveway. Absolutely not. First of all, I got about several phone calls over the weekend. They poured the, they poured the concrete in the fieldhouse. Ray, you could have done a job, better job all by yourself.
Thanks, sir.
I mean, it's the worst job I ever saw in my life. It's got to actually be ripped out. The garage door wouldn't close. The garage door wouldn't close. It, it, it's, it's, uh, it's terrible. And again, like I said, you gotta get ripping that out? You gotta, if you blacktop, is this thing supposed to be blacktop right away? I don't know. In other words, you allocate ninety-five thousand dollars. Is this supposed to-
This, the parking lot already has the, uh-
It's got a sub thing.
Sub base.
Leave the sub base, but don't blacktop it because you're gonna make a mess. First of all, it's, it's, it's a new parking lot. It shouldn't even been sub-based. It should've been just sit on stone for about a year or so. Any, anybody builds a lot, then let it sit, let it settle. And again, like I said, bringing all this material. You got a tandem truck that holds ten yards of concrete and the, thousands of pounds are gonna drive on this thing. You're gonna, you're gonna make a mess out of it. So if, what I'm suggesting, don't pave it, you know, it's, 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 it's wrong. Then you got backhoes that are gonna drive through there, gonna bring all this material in, talking about a thirty-foot, uh, donor's wall. They're gonna need about six, six or seven yards of concrete. That's another concrete truck that's gonna go in there. You're talking about, uh, uh, pavers. You're talking about backhoes. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be done.
So, so as, um, Rob mentioned, we'll have an update on the thing, projects are going on in and around the fieldhouse. And, uh, Ray, you had something to say about the parking lot?
Yes, I mean, I see the engineer standing by the door. The original plan, which has, uh, anticipated your, uh, suggestion, this is just the base coat. The finish coat and the permanent striping will not be done until after the summer, so we're allowing it to settle, allowing for the additional work to be done without damaging the parking lot in late August, early September. We would complete the parking lot with its finished coat and its permanent striping. In regard to the cement work, that's being done by a contract with the M A F. The Borough, when the project is completed, has the ability to accept the work. Our construction inspector, even though it's not our project, went out and rejected the floor, so we haven't accepted it, but it's not our project yet. And the, as I understand it, the contractor is returning to the site on Wednesday and they're gonna saw cut out the floor and repour the concrete in order for it to pass the inspection by the Borough. So as of now, it's on someone else's dime and where we've rejected the work and it'll be corrected on Wednesday. So it's good observation, but we're on it.
Yeah, my, my question is, why do these things happen? Why do they happen?
Nothing happened with the paving. The paving is an excellent job, and that was the job supervised by Bob and done by Tilcon and with D P W.'s help. It went smooth and seamless. The construction work is not our project.
Okay, we, we don't need to get a discussion.
Yeah, he's trying to adjust the sub-
Yep.
Shouldn't even been in.
Yep.
Should've been stone. I mean, you, you know, the, 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 the concrete trucks and all that material's gonna make, make mess with the sub thing in it. I mean, but as far as who's overs, who's in coordinating this M R C. project? Who's the coordinator?
The, the, the fieldhouse is, is coordinated through the M A F. It's a vol, it's a volunteer-driven project. Once it's completed, it will be turned over to the Borough, so this is not a Borough project. But as Mr. Cody pointed out, we are doing our due diligence with inspections and all that, so we're making sure that it is done properly and we're not taking on a project that will cause us headaches later. Okay, and we've, yep, and, and then, uh, you've got your three minutes allocated out for answers. Even that, that's up, so we'll move on to the next person, but we'll, we'll get you on the next round.
Um, Sam, before I came here tonight, I anticipate you wanted to discuss the cement job in the fieldhouse, so I stopped and saw Mr. Horn. Before he leaves tonight, I'll give his email address. He'd be more than happy to have you talk with him because, quite frankly, their cement is not above.
Don, it's, it's- Okay, so the, so you'll be able to, uh, contact him directly and, and, uh, share your concern?
Yeah, while we're talking about, just one more of those, while we're talking about construction, again, I'd like to volunteer my expertise. Joe Moniz would like to volunteers to get on this construction committee because we have a lot of knowledge and a lot of things like this wouldn't happen. So this is my second request. I wanna volunteer my services to this construction committee and Joe Moniz, who's been in the business, who was the one who found out that the North Street pump station, you know, you know what's happening. So just, again, this is my second request and I haven't had no-
All right, sorry. I'll close the loop on that one, because I, um, was reading the name one way and understand, and the pronunciation and other. We, Joe was appointed to the committee back in, uh, January, I believe.
Joe's not gonna go on the committee without me with.
All right, so, okay, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at that contract. All right. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sandy?
Sandy Klockowski, one thirty-six Park Avenue. Um, I came tonight because also about this paving, and I guess my, I have a kind of general question about the paving at the M R C. Um, a year ago in January, when the, uh, project was being discussed, we were told that it was gonna cost three point five million dollars. Uh, that was for the bond ordinance, and that was gonna include two fields, lighting, parking, and a fieldhouse. Then we learned that we wouldn't be able to afford the fieldhouse. Um, and there's an extra cost on that, which I understand some of it's being donated, but still there's, I think that the town approved a hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts for that. Um, there's the, um, extra costs for, um, the, uh, site supervision that's been going on. There's extra costs now for the parking lot, um, which was in the specifications as a gravel parking lot. Um, and, um, I, I'm sure that there were other consulting engineers, et cetera, that have been brought in. So I guess my general question is, when are the taxpayers going to get a full accounting of the costs of the entire project since we were told it was three point five? We were up at three point four with Land Tech alone. Um, and so it looks to me like there's, you know, somewhere between a quarter and a half a million dollars more, so-
Yeah, just a clarification, the, with the fieldhouse, no money was appropriated by the Borough to fund the fieldhouse. What was stated was it was gonna fundraising for a hundred twenty-five thousand plus in-kind fundraising would be led by the M A F., so the, the Borough has not taken on additional bur, uh, burden on that. The ninety-five thousand does fit within the appropriated, uh, three point five million dollars, and as we move forward, you know, at the next meeting, as already pointed out, we'll have an update on the, uh, fieldhouse and donor wall and, and other things. So we'll, we'll see where we are with that, and it is very important, I think, for the public to see a overall report at some point with the total cost of the project.
May I, may I ask Ray a question?
Yep.
Ray, the ordinance for the M R C., could you make a public statement as you, you come in, under the money, under the money, or over the money?
Well, we, we came in under the budgeted amount because there were owner credits of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. There was some drainage adjustments during the course of the project that were developed by the engineer with our, uh, engineering consultant, and there was a settlement with Land Tech that's pending where their contract figure would not fully be paid out. That's subject to them executing it. Based on those two factors, we've come in with, in the budget in order to accommodate the cost of the converting the gravel lot to a paved lot, which we think is a better, more sustainable way to go.
So is it fair to say that we have not used any taxpayer money other than the three point five?
Right. We, we've used the bond financing for the M R C. project.
And we have made our interest, the M A F. has made their interest payment, correct, for this year, right?
Yes, the-
Thank you.
Yes, they did.
So we haven't exceeded the three point five-
We, we have not exceeded three point five.
Expenses to date yet.
Right, yeah. As with every ordinance, we have to, uh, outline where the money comes from and is, is in this ordinance for the parking lot is that it's coming out of the three point five bond issue.
Okay, and so the public can expect in the near future a full accounting and how much money's been raised against principal, not just against interest only? And we'll get a better idea of whether we're gonna have to bond three point five million dollars permanently?
Yeah, and, and as we, part of, uh, one of the key things for the presentation at the next meeting will be this donor wall, so we'll have a, an update of the, the, um, fundraising plans, which, uh, this donor wall will be recognizing the, uh, the donors. So it'll, it'll be, I think we'll have a better understanding of, of where we are with the fundraising.
Well, can we also get a full accounting of what changes went into the project so we can see the change orders that went through Land Tech as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the agenda? Mr. Harrington.
Tim Harrington, Cross Gates Road. We have an ordinance tonight here, number three, that's gonna be introduced. I've read it several times and they're just a little dense, but I don't understand what a sustainable Madison is, and, uh, it's, it's certainly not in the, uh, layperson's English, contrary to some of our ordinance, which are understandable. Who, who could explain exactly what that thing's all about and how it came about?
Can I explain? Can I explain?
Go ahead.
Basically-
Too well.
Sure. It, it was an initiative and a recommendation of the, uh, Madison Environmental Commission. Previously, it was a, uh, informal committee that was known as the Madison Twenty Twenty Committee, and in order to be eligible for particular, uh, funding opportunities and grants to promote sustainable, environmentally sound practices in our community, we need to have a structure in order to do that. These are volunteers that will be supplemented by paid Borough staff upon request to assist them in those initiatives and to facilitate trying to apply for these grant funds. That's the reason why we have to formalize it in, in ordinance. It also makes it a permanent addition to the network of activities by the Borough versus an advisory committee that lapses from year to year. So that was the initiative, and I believe that the discussion previously was unanimously agreed to follow this.
The, the key thing in all that legalese is that this is a committee that will preserve our sustainable grade we have and bring, uh, grant money in, into Madison.
Okay, so you kinda get stuck with this legalese gibberish in order to comply with what your objective is.
Well, it's a great opportunity. I see Betsy Elman's here and other members, but it's, it's, it's a great thing. I think Don was also a sponsor from the committee.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't believe it's legal gibberish. Quite frankly, I'm in favor and have been in favor. I missed introducing this myself for another reason. Number one, I like it because it's going to be an ordinance. It makes it much more difficult, in my opinion, with the counter-changing from the other year, the river at River. I believe that this is extremely important for our future, not necessarily us, for our children and their children. And if you really wanna get down to the bottom line, I always like it when we can make money, by that I mean obtain grants. I firmly believe that the way the chairman has put this together will maximize the efficiency of the M E C., with this as the ones underneath it, and I believe we'll get some grant money. To me, it's a win-win.
I have no problem with the grant money. It's the structure. I mean, and you might refresh my recollection. Do we have a strategic plan ordinance in this town by chance?
We, we do not. We have discussed and we're, hopefully we'll get back on track on doing a strategic plan through, for the, uh, Borough itself.
All right. Uh, I would certainly hope that the public has a chance to read the, what I call legalese in that document, and I think they'll come to the same conclusion, but I understand how, why we're, we're doing it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard on resolutions or items for discussion? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda and move on to agenda discussions, and the first one is appropriation twenty thousand dollars, General Capital Improvement Fund for Workman Utility Vehicle.
David's here.
David's here. Do we have any questions or, since there was some questions from the audience, David, maybe you can do a quick description of this vehicle and the purposes it'll be used for.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This appropriation is out of my capital approval fund for, for the Public Works. This money was budgeted beginning of the year when we talked about capital. This machine here is a multi-use vehicle. We can use it at all fields, even during ice skating time totally. So this way, if we have to clean the ice skating pond off, it's a four-wheel-drive machine. It's a lot lighter than a Jeep. We can clean off the pond too if we have to, to help out the ice skating pond, and it does do, uh, for baseball fields, any kind of fields you wanna do, it's a four-wheel-drive vehicle. That's what this is for. In your paperwork, you will have a description and what is, what it consists of, and this is all under the Middlesex County Co-op total. So this way, we get a better pricing total. We don't have to put out the bid for anything.
Uh, Don?
Um, David and I spoke this afternoon on this evening. The, the length and the thing that I consider to be the hook is that it's usable on offer versus grass or turf. God knows, we have a lot of non, uh, turf fields in this town, so that's gonna be extremely helpful. I think it's an investment because of its wide range in use. It's something that we should be giving our approval of. Thank you, David.
Anyone else wishing to be heard or discuss? Okay, this will be, ordinance is listed for introduction. Thank you, David. You may wanna stay, stay in the front row, David. You might, we might need you for the next, uh, discussion. Uh, use of, uh, mulch at D P W.?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, for adding this on, uh, for this evening. Um, yes, uh, as we heard a little bit before, we have, um, uh, over two thousand cubic yards of mulch, uh, sitting in our, our yard, um, at the, uh, at D P W. Um, we did have several incidences where, you know, there's a little fermentation that occurs in these big piles of, of wood. Uh, they have separated a little bit to prevent any further, um, fires to break out, uh, and they are going through a second chip which finds, uh, finds the, um, the mulch. Um, I would recommend that, um, that basically because of this, um, big pile, that, that the, um, this can be offered, uh, to our citizens at no cost to them and can be delivered, uh, to their residences on a Friday, um, in the amount of whatever they need to, to do this. Um, and, and those who may, uh, come in as a landscaper or contractor, probably be a small charge for them, 'cause I'd hate to have, um, you know, those people come in and get it for free and then charge the residents, uh, to put it, uh, for, for the thing. So, um, I would recommend that, uh, we can, we can open this up and, and see what we can do to, uh, you know, to get the mulch, uh, over to the residents. Uh, David too can attest to, uh, all this, um, availability and, uh, and what we can do, uh, to help out with that. Uh, you know, I commend the, the, uh, the Borough workers for, for keeping the lid on all these little smoldering, uh, fires and all of the, um, uh, work they did since the storm as well as the, um, uh, people coming around and taking down the, the orange X trees that are about town that have been, you know, severely damaged by the storm. So, um, unless, um, there's any other, you know, I can have David fill in the blanks or-
Or do you wanna talk about the availability, manpower, and, uh, your thoughts, David?
Yes, well, Vinny and I have been talking about in regards to the mulch pile that we have, that I have in my yard. We did have, we had three fires last weekend. I've had two guys down there today. We are separating everything. We're putting it all into small piles. I have on, under, uh, contract, a company coming in to regrind it starting Monday. He was supposed to be here, oh, two weeks ago, but he's been in Chatham Township for five weeks. They got a lot of, everybody's still quantified with a lot of storm debris from last year, and he's coming to regrind our whole pile. And now what we're gonna do, we're gonna use a lot for May Day, but I will not use two thousand yards for May Day. And now that's why I wanna clean the yard out. The best way I can do is offer it to the residents, all taxpayers in Madison, for free. We'll deliver it on Friday. They have to call my office, which we're gonna, I'm gonna talk to Jim Burnett of putting it on the RoseNet, Nextel, any which way to publicize it so everybody will know it so they can call my office, and we'll set up delivery schedules like every Friday. We will deliver the stuff and dump it, just dump it in the driveway. That's all we're gonna do. And whatever you take, we don't take it back. Okay? That's the whole thing. But now I am having a second grinding starting as of Monday.
This will be-
And we're gonna start distributing stuff, but I'm gonna be getting about publicizing even more.
And this will be, uh, first come, first served?
Yes.
And the, uh, idea behind the, uh, no charge is we're helping our residents and we'd have to pay to get, get it, uh, if, if we're taking it out of Madison, it would cost-
Well, like Vinny, Vinny and I were saying, if any contractor would want it, we'd have to set up a figure of how much per cubic yard for them to, for buying in that, because right now there's a big abundance of mulch around this area. We can't give it away. That's the whole thing. That's the biggest problem.
The bottom has dropped out of the market.
Oh, yes.
Okay, Jeannie?
David, would you allow residents to come to the yard and pick it up? Because that way we'll save manpower.
Well, the only thing I have with that there is I have nobody to load them, and then they're gonna be in there at their own risk, because if they get hurt on the yard, I look at liability part. I don't want to come back and say, well, I got hurt here and then any kind of lawsuits or that come. That's why I don't like it here.
So you would prefer delivery, okay.
What I, what we've done one time, I did put a pile of stuff behind my garage and nobody actually even came to pick anything up. So, but that's why I like to deliver. That's best, best, best way for me because going back where they are- That's best, best way for me, because going back where they are, it's not a paved road. It's dirt. And there's, it's rough terrain. So that's the whole thing.
Yeah, just as a, just a, not a final point, but a point that it'll actually save us money, because then we'd have to cart this out of town. And the carting charges will be pretty much higher than the leaf charges would be, so.
Nobody even wants to truck it out. They've got so much. And the 20-mile radius, I can't tell you how many cubic yards we got of this in the town, with all the towns with the, those storms we had.
So next steps here, I don't know if we, I don't think we need a resolution that we'll just, staff will put together a communication plan and a process for calling in and getting on the list, and it'll be delivering on Fridays.
Yep.
Okay, we're good with that? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March the 26th. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance two dash 2012 and ask the clerk to read this said ordinance by title.
Okay, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for a new gas pump with card reading station and accessories.
I open, I open the hearing. Is anyone in the public wishing to comment on ordinance two dash 2012? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance two dash 2012.
A second up?
Council discussion. Vocal?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, this is round two invitation for discussion, the opportunity for those in the audience wishing to comment on anything. And again, state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is anyone else wish, is anyone wishing to be heard on? Mr. Harrington, and then Mr. Surtiel will be next.
Tim Harrington again. I know we just approved a worker's utility vehicle. I've become a more open-minded person, don't you, workman anymore, workers. In terms of the paving, particularly, my best example is Woodland and Sampson. If you took a Corvette down Sampson, you'd probably bottom it right now. I've measured, they're about four inches deep, those two channels going down there. When can we at least get some patching done? And I'm going to ask council, because the lady wrote to the newspaper saying that she had incurred some severe damage to her car and thought that she had to eat that cost. I think in this state, if you can prove that a pothole was bad enough that it damaged your car, you're entitled to some form of reimbursement. So it's a double-ended question here.
So Woodland Road should be starting up on the 15th, or 16th, rather. Is that correct?
Correct. Councilman Links made that report, yes.
Okay, yep. And there are, yeah, I saw a couple of bad potholes on Sampson. David still here? We make sure that gets on the, there, Dave. Take a look at a couple of spots in Sampson. They certainly are in bad shape.
And council, am I wrong that there isn't some kind of a procedure in this state where someone, if they can truly prove that they had substantial damage?
I'm not aware of that. I do know that we have, you know, no-fault insurance in the state. In general, what's, what happens is under your comprehensive knock collision, it's, for example, if a deer runs out and hits the side of your car, there's a different deductible, and you can put that through the insurance carrier. Whether the insurance carrier decides to come after municipality, that's up to the insurance carrier through a whole separate action. But the whole purpose of no-fault insurance is that if there's damage done to your vehicle because of a pothole, because of road conditions, because of a deer, you put that through your insurance carrier, and then they handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sam? Did you note that we came in at eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sam Surtiel, Madison Park Avenue. Just a couple, the Elmwood-Fern believer, you know, things don't happen unless you make them happen. Right. About a year ago, when I, we sent a letter to the New Jersey Transit, and Ronnie Fried and I were supposed to, and you got a car, a letter back saying that they were going to start it last November, and here it is. Six months later, they didn't even start it. I'm talking about the Elm Street Bridge and the trestles across the street from the Madison Shwin. I mean, maybe we should send another letter or something? What should we do, right?
Unfortunately, New Jersey Transit didn't have the benefit of your expertise. The contractor they selected defaulted. They've now gone through a legal process to terminate that relationship. They've hired a new contractor, and we've received notification they're going to start in June, both projects. But they've said that before, so.
They need help too, huh?
Well, that's why they need your expertise.
My next thing is, maybe this is for you, Rob. You know, if you go to Madison's post office, it's, I mean, first of all, it's a mess. There's these newspaper things there. There's a garbage basket that hasn't been empty in two years. I mean, it's disgusting. But I was understanding a year or so ago, or whatever it was, 10 months ago, that they were going to make this packet thing, they were going to get rid of those newspaper stands and put some things. Is that in the works?
You mean the modular?
Yes, something, it was going to do something to make it look a little better than it is.
It's still on the DDC's plans. I forget exactly where we are with those.
Yeah, they're working on that right now. They're coming up with designs and implementation plan for them.
All right, so tell them to work a little harder, because it's, okay?
That's the risky thing, the First Amendment, where you can't just kick newspaper boxes out.
And as the layers on of the people, you know, a month ago, something bad happened here. A lot of people were upset. Should have never happened, but it's nice to see everybody's peaceful and everything. But a lot of people request that the president of the council maybe step down. So just, this is what people are saying. So I'm just bringing back message to what the people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? James, and then Carmen?
My question is regards to the or establishing the Madison Advisory Committee. What's the advantage of having ordinance instilled versus a year-to-year renewal resolution? And why was the previous resolution led to lapse? Those are the two questions that I've been wondering about, so.
Actually, state your name and address first, and then-
James Sullivan, 25 Rodry Avenue. And same question before.
All right. And I'll, I'll give you three minutes and 20 seconds if you slow down your questions a little bit for us.
Okay, the first question I have is why was the previous resolution allowed to lapse? And then what is the advantage of having speed ordinance versus a year-to-year resolution renewal for the Madison Sustainable Energy Committee?
Okay, there was no previous resolution, so the Sustainable Committee never-
Existed.
Never, never was established. What the ordinance shows, especially for potential grants and for sustainable status, it shows a commitment on behalf of the governing body in the Borough of Madison to take the initiative on sustainable initiatives, as I overuse a word. I apologize. But it, the biggest thing is a commitment on behalf of the borough.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
I just, now that we haven't had a lot of rain so far this year, I don't want anybody to forget about the North Street Pumping Station, because it could keep up with everything now. But if we get a lot of heavy, heavy rain like we've had before, then I don't, I don't want to have to sweep the stuff out of my basement into the, into the sun pump. So we haven't discussed that in a while, so I just don't want the council to forget about the North Street Pump Station. And this next thing is hard for me to say, but Sam is, you know, Sam, I like Sam. He's a nice guy, but for him to bring up about anybody getting rid of the council president, to me, wasn't a good thing to say, even though Sam is my friend. You know, you have to, you can't disrespect people like that, especially in public. Thank you.
Thank you. And the North Street Pump Station is certainly front and center. Hopefully, we'll be taking action on the contract at the next meeting, and we want to make sure we coordinate with the county that doing the connection before they pave Park Avenue. So it's a high priority in multiple angles. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for April the 23rd, 2012. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance three dash 2012 and ask the borough clerk to read the said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance three dash 2012.
I'll second.
Council discussion? Yes.
Just one question. Again, as it pertains to the ordinance versus ad hoc committee or subcommittee, kind of the way we do the May Day as a subcommittee of the DDC, there's no ordinance for that. Is it legally required that we do this by ordinance?
Hearing, we will get and answer that, but as mentioned, I think it reinforces the commitment and then keeps our level.
Mayor, I believe that the difference is twofold. One, I believe you are correct, that we show a commitment of the council and the borough. But more importantly, and I shouldn't say it more importantly, but, you know, council may be saying it's very difficult to let ordinance, to take an ordinance out. You can better let it loosen up really quick. And what I'm looking for here is the commitment, long term. That's why I recommend the ordinance.
And we will confirm that between now and the-
We're committed to May Day, too. So I mean, I just, I'm just, I just like some clarification, that's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Jeannie?
Yep. I'm just referring to the ordinance itself. There's some titles we need to clean up, the second whereas and the third whereas. And I'm going down to 26 dash two, Purpose and Responsibility. Under item A, to make recommendations to the mayor and council and the Madison Environmental Commission. So since this ordinance mentioned the Madison Environmental Commission several times, I think it's good to, for all of us to really understand the clear relationships between the Environmental Commission and this new committee that we're about to establish. So I, I'm not so sure. The question here is whether or not that we need to include the Madison Environmental Commission here, because later on, if you read other paragraphs, the information will be given to the mayor and council, and also if you refer to paragraph, the paragraph which it talks about meeting minutes and reports, that's F on the next page. Again, it's to the mayor and council and Madison Environmental Commission. Actually, I will hope that all the recommendations, reports, meeting minutes, et cetera, will be available not only to the mayor and council and other boards and commissions, but it will be available to the public as well. I think that's very important.
Well, I think that, that's a, I assume it's a given, you can-
Even though this is an advisory committee, they have to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Right.
We'll have to notice it, have minutes.
Yep.
They'll have to comply with the open and closed session agenda items, put the file of Public Meeting Act. So even though this is an advisory committee, they're bound by all the laws as this governing body is in terms of publication, et cetera.
Right. So the, the question here is whether or not we even need to include, for example, under item A, to mention even the Madison Environmental Commission, and also under F, the second sentence over there, the committee shall regularly circulate to mayor, council, MEC, copies of meeting minutes. Those things should be publicly accessible already, right? Do we even need to say that here? That's the question.
What you should probably do is, is make it clear that they have to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, which would then encompass minutes, resolutions, et cetera. And even though it's advisory, I think that's a good idea just to put that in. I don't think there's a material change to the ordinance. You could just clarify F where it would be a rec, a notification that they have to comply, which says all records, reports, data shall be available. It should say all records and reports and meetings shall comply with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, so we'll add that as a minor. I think the Environmental Commission, you know, obviously, the council will be the body that would approve any actions of this committee that necessary, but there needs to be a tight coordination between the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee and the MEC. So I think it's appropriate to mention it in there.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay, couple, a couple more ideas here. Since we are appointing six public members, I believe, I'm referring to 26 dash three membership under F, six members who are residents of borough, but we don't specifically talk about what kind of qualification that we're looking for. I'm hoping, since this committee has a very specific purpose, I would like to include members with certain expertise. I would recommend that we will include members, not all of them necessary, but we'll go out and look for members have the expertise in these areas. In land use, which I mentioned in a prior council meeting, expertise in energy, expertise in grant writing, since this is one of the main purpose of this committee, to include someone who have done that kind of work in the past. Someone has the expertise of economic development, some sort of expertise in the environmental area, perhaps an environmental scientist, and also someone who, whose expertise in the area of preservation and reuse. I thought those will be nice additions to this committee.
I, I think the, rather than to make this too restrictive, is, this is a committee that is, with the advice and consent of the council, is as-
So we keep that in mind.
Right. That, the goals of a future, you don't want to bind the goals of a future council by putting in the ordinance where they have to revise the ordinance, but the current council can use those as the guidelines for-
Which is certainly considered, yep. I'm okay with that. And also with membership on the B, I think in, in addition to the Assistant Borough Administrator, perhaps we should say either the Administrator or the Assistant Borough I think the reason we're doing this is because we might have certain person in mind while we're creating this, but we're creating the ordinance for the future. So since we have two administrators, either one can be appointed to this.
Yeah, that's not a material change.
Okay, that will, so we'll add that, and there is a. Any other discussion? All right. Call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance four, 2012. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $20,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of a utility vehicle.
Mayor, I move ordinance four, the 2012.
Second.
Council discussion. Covered this fairly well. Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, we need to re-resolution once- Mayor, we need to read Resolution 104 into the record since we made some changes.
Yeah, would you like me to read it in?
Yes.
104-2012, a resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing agreement with the Thursday Morning Club Incorporated to provide programs, services, and meeting room space for Madison organizations. It should read as follows. The changes should be noted, it will be in the 1, 2, 3, 4, in the fifth whereas clause. The first whereas clause, since its inception in 1896, the mission of the Thursday Morning Club Incorporated, TMC, has been to serve Madison and surrounding communities by carrying on community welfare and social settlement work, among other things. Whereas TMC is a nonprofit entity that owns and operates the Madison Community House located at 25 Cook Avenue, Madison, New Jersey, known as the house. And whereas TMC has utilized the house in connection with the TMC's purpose, including to carry on community welfare and social settlement work since 1924, and currently offers a nursery school program, sponsors the before-and-after-school child care program, and conducts after-school enrichment classes, and provides shop space and office space for success of Morris County. And whereas Madison is in need of community services and programs and requires meeting space for local organizations. And whereas TMC has offered to continue to provide services and programs similar to TMC's current programs, as well as to provide meeting room space free of charge at the house on a first come, first served basis to more than 25 different Madison nonprofit organizations, comma, including various civic groups, scout troops, sports recreation groups, and leagues, self-help, self-improvement, and educational programs consistent with its purpose. And whereas the proposed cost for these services in 2012 is $16,000, and whereas the chief financial officer has attested that funds will be available in an amount not to exceed $16,000 for the payment of these services in account 370/215. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris and State of New Jersey that the mayor and borough clerk are authorized to execute an agreement between the Thursday Morning Club Incorporated and the Borough of Madison for providing the services described herein in a form approved by the borough attorney.
Mayor, I move Resolution 104-2012.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
I may read the form for 104.
104.
We're just on 104, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 106 and 107, 2012.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ask Mr. Links just to step out for a moment? Thank you.
In dealing, yes, in dealing with the Resolution 105.
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor, I move Resolution 105-2012.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Thank you. Come on back. Any unfinished business? Approval vouchers?
Public safety, $28,363.82. Health and public assistance, $4,486.43. Public works in engineering, $151,793.45. Community affairs, $6,779.76. Finance and borough clerk, $207,812.50. And utilities, $341,383.46. Total is $740,619.42.
Mayor, I move the vouchers for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And a new business, a couple of appointments. One, appointment straightening out, appointments that were made on New Year's Day related to the Environmental Commission. These are mayor appointments that do not require consent of the council. Stephen Stockrick was a alternate and should have been moved up to a regular member, so move him to a regular member, term expiring 12/31/13. And Susan Nikulescu would be the alternate number two. She was appointed as a regular member, so alternate number two with a term ending 12/31/14. And also, would like to make the following appointments, asking council confirmation for the zoning board of adjustment. Moving Diane Driscoll from a regular member, from an alternate one to regular member. Timothy Blair from alternate two to alternate one. And appointing Susan Nikulescu of 44 Canterbury Road to alternate number two, unexpired term of Nancy Northrup through December 31st, 2013.
Mayor, I move these appointments.
Second them.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Thank you. And?
I wish it to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn. Adjourn.
Thank you all.
Amen. We beat our own record.
Yeah.
I think we're still off track.